All right, we can move on from closed session. Is there anything to report? Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson. Silent prayer and flag play. Councilwoman Lozano, you're on the track.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, October 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 5th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Mr. Hammond, I don't believe there's any presentations. All right, we move on to public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you. First up, we're going to have Brian Snow.
Ben Thomas.
Is it Myers?
Haynes.
Oh, Haynes. And then after that will be Craig Morris. Let's get him on in.
My name's Brian Snow. I've been a resident of Galt for about 15 years. All right, so forgive me, I'm not very good at this. But anyway, I'm here on behalf of myself and many. First of all, let me just kind of, I got five minutes, right? Yeah, I come to Galt from a small town, Gilroy originally, and I come to Galt about 15 years ago. I come to like Galt a lot. It's a lot like my old, old city, small town. Get to know everybody. There's always something to do. Lot of events that draw community together, whether it be 4th of July festivals, all the festivals we just had with the 150-year anniversary, balloon festival, parades, fairs, strawberry festival, whatever. I walk into a store, I know 10 people. I won't get out of the store for an hour. So what brings me to this is the community aspect of our town. Comes, you know, opportunities to come together. And one of those opportunities that has been cut at the recent meeting, and I missed it, of course. But the softball program, adult softball program. There's not a lot of recreational activities here in Galt anymore, especially for adults. Not that it's a huge priority, it's softball. But as an opportunity to get together and be a community and get to know people and interact on a weekly basis for, in this case, you know, eight, nine months out of the year. I understand there's a deficit. I understand there has to be ways to reduce that. And I want to be productive in my presentation and not be demeaning in any way, shape, or form. But, you know, the, I think it's like 24,000 bucks or something that, you know, that's in deficit of the softball program, adult-wise. You know, I've been involved with a lot of charitable boosters and all that stuff. We just had that memorial tournament that raised $15,000 for scholarships that went back to the high schools. That wouldn't have been possible if, in fact, we did not have the adult softball program, because there would not be a following. So I think it's very detrimental. We keep this, find a way to make it work. You know, I know people like myself will make measures to do so, whether it be we ump and score-keep ourselves, or whatever it takes, you know. I've seen that the billboards are a probable thing that's come up in the past, and I've seen them advertised lately. It'd be sad to see that opportunity go to waste. And, you know, promoting that and helping, helping with the fundage of this program. I just think it's one of the small things that keep this town, I say the, you know, a wonderful town, a great American little town. I always pride myself about this town. And that's one of the many things, and really, I literally tagged 150 people to be here today. You see them? And they were all met via the softball program. So it's just not the game. It's just the community. And if there's ways that somebody can get ahold of me, myself, other people, I know Sean's avid about it. I know a lot of other people who are, you know, good citizens and stuff that are also wanting to keep this alive. And if there's a way to do so, I think, you know, we just have to have communication amongst ourselves and that. And also to keep it, you know, in the last several years, it's kind of been on the demise. I mean, we only got four teams this last fall for co-ed, whereas before we would max it out. So it has to be an effort to make it more promising in order for this thing to thrive. So that's why I leave it here, is that I just really think that's a big mistake to cut the softball program. It's a heartfelt thing for me. I coach a lot of sports. I'm active in the community, and this is a big part of it. So I hope I speak on behalf of a lot of other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
I have a quick question, if I may. I know this isn't on the agenda. But Mr. Solis, is softball still happening right now? I mean...
Yes, we had already started our fall league before that decision was made. The decision was made to, after it started, so we continued with the fall league.
Okay, and then when does spring registration start?
Typically around March.
Okay.
It really depends on when spring break is.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Mr. Hayes.
Councilmembers. So I'm here to talk to you guys tonight. It's not so much about a city of Galt issue, nothing that you guys can directly probably do a whole lot about, but we're looking for some help. Sean, I know I've sent a talk to you a little bit recently about AT&amp;T's desire to put in a new cellphone tower at what they're calling Gonzalez Farms. So Gonzalez Farms is located just north of the Parker Creek community where I live. So it's really in our backyard. You know, it's 450 feet from our house. They would like to build this cell tower, and they've made some deals with, you know, the county to disguise it as a water tower and, you know, other things to kind of appease people. You know, as a community, none of us want the cell tower there. Cell towers have proven to have a negative effect on home values. We have to disclose it when we go to sell our house. And these aren't things that we want near our community, you know. Everybody has a cellphone, right? We understand. Everybody thinks they're a necessity. But in our backyard, I know myself and some of my neighbors I've talked to, we wouldn't have bought our houses if the cell tower was in our backyard. So it's not right that the county is even entertaining the notion to let them, you know, move in and build this tower in our backyard. There's health risks, whether people believe them, don't believe them, sorry. You know, there's two sides to every story. I don't know. But I got little kids. My neighbors got little kids. There's a daycare that backs up to where they want to build this. You know, this can affect a lot of people negatively, more than it's going to help. I mean, there's plenty of cellphone service that you can get that works in our neighborhood. My phones, they work just fine. So we attended the Southeast CPAC meeting last Thursday night, I think it was, and enough neighbors were there and enough people, we were able to get them to not approve the, their review of the tower. Sadly, they're not the final decision, right? They're, they're just the review committee. It goes back to the planning department with the county. It's not going to make it to their vote until I was told about December sometime, so it's still a little ways away. We're working on organizing our community, petitions, letters, everything that we can do to present to them to not have the tower built. Pick a different location, you know, someplace that's not visible from people's backyards, their houses that they just bought, you know, brand-new houses. So I'm just here to ask the council if there's anything else you guys can do. I know, I talked to Sean. I believe Chris had already written a letter to the county about their, I don't know how you want to put it, dislike maybe of the tower. But I'm just here, so if there's anything else you guys can do, pressure you can put on them, input, help us, you know, provide anything to us that maybe you guys know about that we can use to justify our cause and see if we can't not have this tower built in our backyard. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I just have a quick question for you. Did you guys reach out to the property owner at all? Just kind of let him know how you felt? I don't think I asked you that.
We haven't reached out to the property owner. At the CPAC meeting, the property owner just to the east, who apparently was in negotiations with AT&amp;T about two years ago for the same tower, he was at the meeting, and he had turned it down in his property citing health effects and some other, some other issues. We haven't reached out to Gonzalez Farms at this point.
I mean, I know they're pretty...
Do you plan on it, or?
I think it'd be a good idea, because I think, you know, they're good people in the community. I know of them, and so I think it, just if you approach them and just express how you feel in your neighborhood, just how you felt as a neighbor to their ranch or whatever, that I don't think there's anything negative that would become of that. So it's just an idea. You're looking for ideas, but I think that would be helpful, too, so.
Okay, we'll try that, too. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. All right, next up is Craig Morris, representing South County Services.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight representing as the chairperson for South County Services to announce that we're having our senior, annual senior luncheon on December 12th, Chabola Center, between 11:00 and 1:15. Again, the Real Men's Club will be doing the cooking, and this year we're going to have barbecued pork chops with, yeah, I know, they're just killer, with, yeah, mashed potatoes and gravy, green beans and onions, coleslaw, and Parker House rolls that will be donated by spawns. And then Meals on Wheels will be doing the pumpkin pie. We have currently 23 volunteers. This year, we're going to need 36. In brief, the reason why we are is because last year's event, the serving was way too slow. People, the seniors, I mean, it was, it just wasn't good. So we've had two meetings with Parks and Rec, and Amando came up with a great idea, very simple. We're going to have two serving tables with four people on each side. So that's going to be 16 right there. We're going to have seven serving carts with two people on each end serving the meals. That will be 14. And we're going to have four people serving coffee. Amando's going to be in the kitchen, be in the ramrod, and then we're going to have one person, he volunteered to do it. No, what do you want, want, want me to do? I, I said, yeah, okay. And so, and then we have one person just doing the Parker House rolls, because they're going to be sort of warm-cold. It just doesn't cut it. So then, last year, we had like 285, not including the staff. I mean, it was, we ran out of chicken. It was crazy. So this year, we're going to have 300 pork chops. And we're also going to be issuing tickets for the senior citizens, okay? So I brought them to show you. These aren't available yet. Amando's going to get, get one early, but, so these will be given to the seniors. Now, they're still going to have to sign up, call up and list their names, and then they'll get their ticket. Because if I got one of these in November, because they'll be going up available the first week in November, and so if they lose the ticket, like I probably would, we'll still have their names on the roster. So if they lose their ticket, they come in, as long as your name is on the roster, they can come in, okay? If the name is not on, they're going to have to sit and wait. So the end is for the raffle, so we'll take that. So we're going to have the girls, so all they got to do is just come in. There'll be no checking in, give the ticket to the girls. They'll tear it off. They can just come in. We'll expedite the process for getting in, too. So the reason why I'm here, though, is to invite the city council to be volunteers again. They've always done it. I see no reason why it wouldn't happen this year, but I don't want to put any pressure on anybody. I've talked to Chief Stockman with Maria Rosales. He's committed 20 people. I mean, it's just going to be great. I'm kidding. He's going to have four. Look at, look at you. I surprise, yeah, okay, sorry, sorry, chief. So he's going to have four, maybe six. I've also talked to the Consumer's Fire Department. They're going to have four. I tried to give him, so they're going to bring the fire truck, and I tried to get him to commit to giving us a ride on it, but he wouldn't do that, so that's not going to work. I've talked to Chrissy Ryas. He's going to be a volunteer, but Chris doesn't have a choice, because he is the vice chair for South County Services. I've talked to Mark today, so Mark and Mike are going to be there as well. And then I've got several business owners that are going to be volunteering, you know, their services at the luncheon, besides gift certificates and cash donations to help pay for this thing. So it's all free, of course, for the seniors. So how many can I sign up now? Paul, Sean?
So, Mr. Morris, this is for the seniors in high school, or the senior citizens?
It's for senior citizens like yourself. I was very, I just said, I, no, no, very soft, soft, soft there.
Well, I just don't think...
I said senior luncheon.
I know, but some of the public doesn't. This is a fantastic lunch that the South County Services put on. Every year, there's, how many, you said 200?
250 tickets. It's just, it's any more than that, it just doesn't work. I mean, it's just...
Right, for the seniors in Galt.
Amando and I've talked, talked about, Maria and I, we've talked, talked about it. It just, you know, to be feasible and get, get the meals out, especially with the two serving lines, it's going to be great.
It's a lot of fun every year, and you guys go out and get lots of prizes, and the senior citizens get to win, all kinds of things, and it's really just one of the highlights of the year for me. So I just wanted everybody to get that. December 12th?
Yes, December 12th, Chabola, 11 o'clock.
So people knew what you were talking about.
Yes. And then, of course, Mark Cruz is going to be there as Santa Claus. I hope he hasn't lost it.
I was supposed to tell who that is.
Some people watch this and still believe in Santa Claus.
Say what, Rich?
Some people still believe in Santa Claus.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I burst, burst your bubble, Rich. I'm sorry. Listen, thanks for your time, folks.
Thank you, Craig.
So all four, and I'm sure Kurt can probably do it, too.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, thanks, all.
We volunteer him.
You know, last year, Winkler and Clark, I don't know if it was Clarkson and Winkler, but it was Winkler and someone. They were, it was the mashed potatoes and gravy, and the whole, like, trying to make the little dip and then put the gravy. It wasn't working out. So don't put Public Works in charge of the mashed potato and gravy. Put them in charge of something else, something they can handle. I'm just messing with you, Mark.
Are you volunteering for the mashed potatoes? I think that's what he's, he's volunteering for mashed potatoes. All right. So we have one more public comment. Is it Alfredo Lopez? Tapia? I'm sorry. Alfredo Tapia, you are up.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name's Alfredo Tapia. I'm also here in support of the softball program, you know, and to request, you know, it's maybe easier said than done. And if there was any way to find this funding, I agree with Mr. Snow brought up earlier, you know, I've met a lot of people, good businesses came from the softball program, you know. It's, it's a small community. Galt's a small town. It's beautiful. I moved out here in 2004, you know, and this has been a place where I've called home now, and it's, it's awesome. I mean, I know, I've seen Mr. Farmer out in softball in the past, you know, and, you know, no, and many other people, as, you know, a lot of people that I run into nowadays. When I first got here to Galt, we started, you know, playing and all that, and that's where I've learned and know a lot of people. It made me feel welcome into the city of Galt. You know, now, I, my opinion only, think it's a little ridiculous of the only program that any adults have left to do in this town is yet soon to go away. You know, there's been many rumors as to what may happen with the grounds and everything. You know, I, I run at least three teams, you know, one co-ed. Sometimes we ran two co-ed teams every Thursday night and ran Monday night teams. We've been coming back religiously every season. And, you know, in the last year, year and a half, I've noticed the whole program's starting to go down, because nobody knew about the season starting up again. So the day of, when today's the last day to register with late fees, you know, everybody's like, when did the signups start? You know, when I called the city of Galt to ask what did happen, oh, we've been sending out emails and Gmail has been getting bounced back to people, so nobody knew. So it just seems like every time, it was just an ongoing thing, you know. A lot of people, we used to have three diamonds for six, seven, eight, and nine o'clock games. They used to fill up pretty quickly, and, you know, we used to have good seasons. All of a sudden, in the last year, year and a half, or this last season, it's just all started going downhill. Nobody knows about, you know, there was rate hikes. Okay, we can deal with that. But when nobody's being told that there will be games and when the opening season is, it, you know, it throws people off, so people just don't sign up. Now, you know, Mr. Solis mentioned that, so, signups began in March. As a matter of fact, the season began in March this year. Signups were actually earlier. I didn't find out until the day of the last registration with late fees. See, you know, I've conducted business with a lot of people that play in the diamonds. It is a great, how would you call this?
Networking?
Networking, thank you. Yeah, so it is great networking. It's about, it's gotten me business. I've actually hired some people on the team to do work for myself, you know, so it is networking. We don't, you know, I have many suggestions. Not only my opinion, you know, it doesn't mean that they have to go through. I mean, there's banners that our businesses can put up along fences, if that would be allowed, you know, to raise a little bit more money to supplement these things. And, you know, once again, the fees went up on softball. Okay, maybe it was a good thing. But, you know, fees going up, I feel that volume was lost. People didn't want to pay that extra $100. So now you're going from having 10 or 11 teams going to four teams on a Thursday night, and if we don't get one more, we're not going to play. So, you know, the volume was lost. Even though fees went up, there's, the volume's not there anymore. Therefore, you know, I believe that funds are being lost there as well. I mean, poor communication, you know, raising fees, you know. Softball's great. It's great. I mean, you know, look at the past years. How long has this been going? It didn't go just because, it didn't go this long just because nobody wanted to play. I mean, something happened here. I mean, has it been looked at as to what happened to cause the drop in people signing up to play recreational softball? I mean, this is all us older adults have to do here in Galt. If that's gone, I mean, it's done. I mean, you know, networking's no longer there. I mean, people will, maybe no, new people that come into the city will probably not meet each other again, or maybe just walk by each other at the store, not knowing. As Mr. Snow mentioned earlier, yeah, I've run into tons of people, hey, what's going on, man? How you doing? Hey, you guys playing this week? You know, so now, what we do is we either go into Elk Grove and leave our tax dollars in Elk Grove, consume their stuff, or we go to BLD in Manteca, because that's all we have left to do. I mean, you know, yeah, so I'm very much in support, and we ask that, you know, on behalf of at least my team, we ask that, hey, can we find a way to make this happen next season? We don't want to see this go away. This is a great thing, you know. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia. All right, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Sandu?
Nothing to report.
Don't you have safety? Safety committee?
Oh, I, I'm going to explain at the end.
Okay. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I just want to touch on the fact that we had a SACOG meeting, and one of the highlights that came out of that was SACOG is again doing a youth leadership academy this year for students that are in high school to participate in. It's a great program. I'm going to be sending out letters on behalf of SACOG to the high school principals to have them encourage students to apply. SACOG is a six-county region of government, and this program brings high school students in to meet each other, teaches them leadership skills, teaches them how government works, and things like that. So I just wanted to highlight that and let the public know that if you have a high school student, you could go to the SACOG, S-A-C-O-G dot org website and apply on there. And I will also be sending out a notice to the principals. It's a really good program. It's going to be the second year, and really looking to have one or two people from each jurisdiction, students from each jurisdiction be a, be a part of it, so. That's it.
Thank you. I attended the safety meeting. It was very short, and then I had to run over to the teen center meeting. So we're trying to give as much support as to the people trying to form the teen center. They're, I tell you, they're movers and shakers. They've got some great ideas, and they're very organized. I also had my air quality board meeting, and some of the discussion, we haven't come to a vote yet, is to, the funding's gone down, so they're talking about putting a per capita tax on the cities and counties, and that would put a larger tax burden on Galt, and one also on the county that they can't afford right now. So we're, that's coming to a vote at the next meeting. There was a lot of discussion on that, so some hard decisions, and we can't afford that at this time. All right, that's it. All right. I forgot the agenda approvals. Were there anything to be pulled off of consent calendar? J4? Anything else? All right. Can I get a motion to approve, accept the minutes as submitted of September 17th, 2009, receiving file warrants for the period ending September 19th, 2019, adopt a resolution recommending the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors not opt-in, affirmatively declining to authorize the permitting of microenterprise home kitchen operations countywide, and accept the treasurer's port as submitted?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, I mean, Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. All right, and we pulled subject for approval of cooperative purchase agreement for fuel delivery.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, just 'cause I was kind of intrigued by the whole thing. So, we're basically just some, and I apologize, I could've just came to you about this before, but I've been really tied up personal stuff, so I didn't have any time to reach out to staff for the meeting. So, we're getting, we basically can, we're like, get to join into a kind of a package deal with other counties to get like this, this deal on the fuel and all that, right, from Hunt and Sons, right? So, my question was, the fuel price actually seems really good, so if fuel prices change throughout the course of our contract, we're locked in for that rate? Is that how it works?
It will change.
Okay.
It will change through, through the life of the contract.
Okay.
There is a, there is a format that they utilize on, on a price that happens at the time of delivery, you know, at that moment of delivery that is calculated into it, and there's a whole formula in here and how they use a cooperative pricing through the, through that association. It's O-I-S-H or something like that. It's in, it's, it's a, it's in a attachment or Exhibit A2, I believe, and then there's some additional cost to that. There's costs around four to five cents for bobtail deliveries, and another cost of four or five cents for, per gallon for, for certain types of fuels that we have. I mean, certain types of equipment that they use to deliver it, and, and so, all of that gets averaged in, and so our rate does go up and down.
Okay.
And we save anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand a year.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the prior, the rate, I was like, that's pretty reasonable compared to, you know, I know what fuel costs, you know, typically on average right now, so anyways, that's the only question I have, is just if that was locked in or if it does variable, but it seemed like a good thing. I just was kind of never, I don't really understand that you guys did that, and I think it's a good deal, so, that's the only question I had. Thank you, Mark.
I just, I just have a comment. I was gonna actually pull it, just to comment on the item. I think we need to do more of this, and I understand that we have other agreements with other agencies that drive pricing down for us for a variety of things in the city, but saving twenty-five to sixty thousand dollars a year is, is a good thing, obviously, and, and anywhere, and everyone's gonna get tired of hearing me say this, but wherever we can work with other government agencies and/or private entities to, to drive our costs down for our citizens, I think we need to continue to do. At the SECOG board, we, we actually approved several items very similar to this in the area of transportation and things like that, so it's a really good program. You know, even if, even if we save ten thousand dollars, I think it's a, it's a good thing, and, and, and so, look forward to doing this a lot more often with different services and goods.
I was gonna echo what Councilmember Lozano said, and noticing this is a new contract, and because of this, we will be saving twenty-five to sixty thousand, so, thank you, very, very nice job. Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a subcontract to the master purchase agreement between Sacramento Area Council of Governments and Hunt and Sons Incorporated for the purchase and delivery of fuel and lubricants?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion votes, motion passes four zero. All right, any scheduled matters?
No. Regular calendar? Let's see, Finance Department, Ms. Tyson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lamson, councilmembers. Before you this evening is an item, the first year of a write-off of uncollectible accounts receivable. This is per a new policy that council approved last July. The policy follows accounting standards for write-offs of such accounts. So each year, the city's finance department evaluates uncollectible accounts, and a portion is expensed based on the likelihood of collection. And that's through an entry allowance for doubtful accounts. Even though the accounts continue to be pursued, this write-off is done off of the books every year. What was missing in the past was this entry, a final write-off, which takes it out of the accounts. This is the first year of the write-off based on the policy. The amounts reflected in this item span about thirteen, more than thirteen years' worth of these expensed items, and it includes more than five hundred accounts. The average write-off per year is less than a quarter percent, so we have a, actually a very low write-off rate, but this is accumulated for a number of years, and this entry needs to be made. It is important to note that the write-off amounts for a single year will be really a fraction of this, and that the accounts continue to be pursued even though they're written off. Do you have any questions?
So, Ms. Tyson, can you explain, I know last year we wrote a lot more off because we hadn't been writing any off. Can, is this, this is less than last year, or more?
Last year, there was no write-off. There was an approval of the policy.
Okay.
And so, there was an uncollectible accounts, recorded a normal year's worth. This is actually the first year of the formal write-off.
Okay, thank you. Any more?
Yeah, so, Ms. Tyson, so, so, yeah, I was seeing some of these are like from 2008, so like, or actually 2010.
And eight?
Yeah, eight is the oldest one. Yeah, nine. So, you say that we continue to look, to pursue these, but we don't actually continue, if we write them off, we don't continue to pursue them, but if they do come in, if they do end up paying after we write it off, then it comes in as new revenue, right? That's what I read in the staff.
It's both. It is both. So, the accounts go to collections, and there is a process that is, that continues through that method. In addition to that, if, like, if somebody came in and opened a new account and said, hey, I moved back in the area, we're gonna look back and say, oh, great, welcome, welcome back to the city of Galt, here's your account balance. So, we will pursue it in that manner also.
Okay. I was, 'cause I was confused, 'cause it says, it does say that we'll continue, collection efforts will continue, but then in another part of the thing, it says that these are being written off because all means of collections have been exhausted, and so on and so forth, so I was just, it's kind of contradicting, but...
Yeah, the due diligence, the efforts that are articulated in the policy, they've all been accomplished.
Okay.
So I noticed there's the big one that filed bankruptcy. Is there any chance of, and when they go through the court proceedings, getting a little bit of that back, or is that pretty much no?
No, we've, it's gone.
What does, what does statute of limitations mean? I'm sorry.
The statute of limitations is basically four years for most items. Yeah.
So if someone just stiffed us for eighteen thousand dollars, for example, this one on here, if they can write it out for four years, then, I mean, that's how it works?
That's how it works.
Wow.
Now, when it goes to collections, of course, the collection agency, if they have, have a high balance like that, they get a percentage of what is collected, so they're gonna pursue that more diligently than the five hundred dollar one. Most of the, yeah, there are many items that are very small balances, but they're still in collections.
Sorry, the statute of limitations is the amount of time you have to file a lawsuit to try to collect it. So if you wait more than whatever the statute is, sometimes it's three or sometimes four, it could be one. If you wait too long, then, then it's time barred in the courts, right? But if you go to court, you can get a judgment, and then you can continue to attempt to collect that judgment for a significant amount of time. So, an important part of this is what your collection policies are, and how you go out and use either your staff or collection agencies to try to recoup some of these, some of these debts.
Thank you.
So, I have a question on that. We are write-off almost ninety-six thousand dollars, right? And we adopted the policy last year, 2018, and since we adopted the policy, this is the first time we're going to write off that amount?
Correct.
And all this amount is, is already exhaust every effort to collect the money, right?
Yes.
The one thing is when the big amount, like in eighteen thousand, fourteen, did the city try to pursue in a court, or just with the collection agencies?
So that particular item, we have pursued. There is a judgment against that, but we still have an inability to collect.
So the judgment means judgment always, you can, every ten years, you can renew it, right? So if we're writing down this, and then we cannot renew the judgment?
Yes, we can still renew it.
So are we pursuing to renew the judgment on eighteen thousand dollars?
I don't know that we have at this point. I mean, I don't, sorry, let me look at the year.
Well, you said that we are gonna continue.
Well, it dates back to 2009, but I, the judgment may have been subsequent to 2009.
The, yes, I don't have that information about when the judgment is.
Okay, and on the, the other item, I have a question. Back in 2008, refund of developer deposit, can you, somebody explain me a little bit about what happened on that?
That item, the, the refund was issued to the incorrect, an incorrect person, and we've been unable to collect from that incorrect person. So we issued a refund several years ago, and it went to the wrong person.
Yeah, that, that was, apparently, that refund was issued back in June of 2008. The city's made attempts to, apparently, to obtain those funds back since that time, but has been unsuccessful.
Thank you.
Could, could you explain to me, since we're asking about them, I just thought, the big one on there, the low, the low mod housing loan, sixty-one thousand dollars, what is that?
So I believe that that was a, a loan that was made to an individual under the city's housing program as it existed back under redevelopment, and there was a default on that loan. The individual who defaulted declared bankruptcy, and so we've been unable to move forward with collection. And so, you're right, that is, of the ninety-six thousand, that's sixty-one thou, more than sixty-one thousand dollars.
So, but if it was a loan regarding housing, was there no collateral, or do we not have any property as?
So, bankruptcy is a different animal, and so you're, you're really not able to pursue it beyond that, beyond what assets would be available for any payment to any creditors, and although I don't know, I'm not familiar with the particular loan documents, any ability to recoup funds may be based on what position the city held at that time in the line of succession, if you will, for any, any available funds.
Any other discussion? All right. Can I get a motion, approved by motion, the write-off balance, the write-off of uncollectible receivables in the amount of ninety-six thousand, nine-hundred thirty-seven dollars, twenty-five cents, per the write-off of uncollectible receivables policy? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Do we have any communication?
No. Okay, anything from the city clerk's report? No. All right, comments by staff. Ms. Tyson, was there anything else?
Nothing further.
Mr. Arias?
A couple items, a couple of good news pertaining to revenue. This week, we did issue a certificate of occupancy to the Best Western ten-room expansion, so, small project, but actually significant for the city because it does enhance revenue, so we're excited about that. In addition, as you know, the billboard environmental document is available for public review. We're planning on going to, presenting that to Planning Commission next week, and also Parks and Rec. So Parks and Rec Committee, our commission, on Wednesday night, and then Planning Commission on Thursday night, and then to City Council first week of, first meeting in November. So, good news on the revenue front.
Thank you so much. Mr. Clarkson?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Ms. Narlock, what are you, what jobs do you have posted right now?
Actually, we have police officer, and I think that's the only one I've been assigned.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Solis?
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank a couple of groups for helping out the Parks and Rec Department. The High School 4H group came out and did a workday for the Parks and Rec Department. The Lions Club is stepping up and helping us with mowing of the Lions Oak Park. The Chamber is helping us with the promenade, promenade, and we've had several private citizens out in our parks helping us pinch litter and picking up, so I just, I want to thank, you know, the, these groups and these citizens publicly, and tell them we appreciate everything that they're doing for us and the support they're giving us.
Thank you, that's very good news. Chief Sockman?
I just have three items.
Just?
Only 'cause Chris said two, I have to have three. Tomorrow's Coffee with a Cop. It's actually National Coffee with a Cop Day. We're gonna be at Aroma Bakery from 7:30 to 9:30 tomorrow, and then...
That's on Lincoln Way, right?
What's that?
That's on Lincoln Way, just...
It is, yeah. It's actually 241 Lincoln Way. The other thing is, if you noticed, I'm wearing a lot of pink. It's not really where my, my face stops and my shirt, t-shirts starts. October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, many, many years ago, a police agency, and I forget who started the Pink Patch Project, so for three years now running the city of Galt, Galt PD has been doing the same. So in support of those suffering, the survivors, especially those in our community, we wear them proudly. So we have pink patches, pink t-shirts, and polos that all show our support. And then, finally, I get to brag about our people again, and what a great job they're doing. The Western States Police K-9 Association, essentially, that's all the states on the western side of the United States are, can all be participants in it, and our, the Western States 2019 Top Team of the Year goes to Galt, the city of Galt. That's Copper and Officer Slater and Kane and Officer Little. They competed throughout the year, and so they are the top teams of the, for the entire Western States Police K-9 Association. They were awarded that this past Saturday in South Lake Tahoe. So we're all very, very proud of our K-9 teams.
Congratulations, thank you. Mr. Hagman?
I have nothing specific.
All right. Attorney's office?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Councilmember Lozano?
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Yeah, I have a couple things. Went to the Chamber Luncheon last week, my wife and I went, and Supervisor Nottoli was there, and it was good to hear him speak on some stuff that was important going on in the county, and we also actually touched on the micro enterprise home kitchen thing, specifically brought that up because Chamber members, you know, business owners and restaurant owners, and so it definitely affects them, so, kind of put that in his ear, that our disapproval of that, and that, you know, we'd be sending that letter. I went to the Farm to Fork, also attended with my wife, it was a great event. It was a beautiful evening. It was great to see how many people are out there supporting, you know, the FFA. It was a huge turnout, and just remind you, you know, that we are still an ag community, and, and how much that's important to our community, and so how many people came out to support that, was great to see that. And I wanted to thank you, Armando already did, but, Mr. Solis already did, but the Lions Club, thanks to Lions Club for stepping up with taking care of the Lions Park, you know, adopting that park, and we have some other organizations that are helping with some others and private citizens, so it's great to see the community come out and become stakeholders, and trying to get us through this crisis that we're with, we're going through with the budget, but trying to keep our city, you know, everybody chipping in, doing their part to trying to keep things looking the best they can. And then lastly, just commenting about the softball, you know, everybody knows I was an advocate for trying to save that program, and I just want to say that I think, you know... know, there, we're trying to work behind the scenes to come up with maybe a possible solution, to do something. I know Mr. Solis and his staff have been looking it over and coming up with maybe some ideas of how the program can be saved, so whatever may to be seen, it will take some compromise for sure, but I think that, I just want people to know out there that are playing softball that we're, it's not, we're not giving up on it, so hopefully we can come, something can come together, and we can maybe bring it back to council and see if we can't, we can't save it, but we'll, we'll have to see how that goes, so I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandu?
Yeah, a couple things. I attended the soft opening of Papa's and Wings, they're doing a great job, great food, great atmosphere. They're very busy, which is very good, good for them and good for the city. I also attend the Farm to Fork Dinner is hosted by Galt Egg Boosters. It is really nice event every year with locally grown produce and meat. We also have a safe, a public safety meeting last week. We did discuss, there is a four-way stop on Amor Basta and Waller, and from the public work, they get a report, and we have same issue, I think, years ago. And we moving this to more evaluating and more information from the staff, from the committee, or from the public, so it's can moving to the next meeting, we will decide it can bring to, to the council, or, or we can just, we make a decision over there. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Chamber Lunch with Donatoli, and it was, it was, I don't want to say it was good to hear all the struggles the county is facing right now, but they are facing the same struggles the city is. So it was good to hear from Donatoli. The Farm to Fork was fabulous, they did a great job, and there were so many FFA students running around, we wanted for nothing. I too attended the opening of Papa's Wings with Lozano and Vice Mayor Farmer, and it was great to see all of our local young people, I don't want to say kids, because some of them have graduated, with local jobs, 20 or 30 of them just running around working, so that's, that's great that they're bringing jobs to the community. And then Councilmember Lozano and Councilmember Sandu attended, went, attended the Assembly floor with Jim Cooper, he wanted to give us a proclamation to celebrate our 150 years. So Vice Mayor Farmer was not able to attend, he had some family obligations, and more importantly, he handed us a check for $1.7 million for infrastructure, for improvement on Walker Park. He was council, I mean, Assemblyman Cooper was instrumental in getting that for us, I think it was a grant we applied for, correct? Armando, Mr. Solis?
It was information that we presented, I think the city presented it more than a year ago to Assemblyman Cooper. It wasn't successful the first year, but he was able to get it through this year in, in the state budget, and it, as you indicated, it is to help with infrastructure out at, at Walker Park. There are many phases to that park and its overall master plan.
That's great. So we just want to thank Assemblyman Cooper for petitioning for that for us, and I think that's all. Does anybody have anything else? Anything else over there, gentlemen?
Would you like to share with the class?
Meeting adjourned. In record time.